Okay, good afternoon, everyone. It's six o'clock. We're gonna call this order, please. Is that this time? Reverend, would you leave us an invocation?
Sure will.
We're gonna give Donna a reprieve today.
Blessed be thy name. Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for this day you've given us. And Father, it might be a little rainy outside, a little stormy. We know that you who are in control of all things, Father. We do ask your hand of protection upon all those who are traveling, those who are on the road right now, or those who are affected by this weather, and for anybody in the path of any tornadoes that come. Father, we pray that your hand of protection would be upon them. Father, you would be with all the emergency responders to respond in such cases, Father. Thank you so much for their hearts, for their service. We thank you for the wonderful servants and emergency responders we have here at Morgan's Point, who, Lord, go out and seek to make this place a safer and a better place to live, Father. So we ask you bless them, lift them up, and keep them safe, Father. We thank you for also the city council, for all the decisions they make. Father, I ask that you give them wisdom and discernment for each and every decision. And, Father, that as Morgan's Point continues to grow, will continue to be a wonderful and safe place to live. Father, we love you and praise you. We thank you so much for this wonderful country that we live in. And we ask that you be with all those who serve this country, all those families, Lord, whose spouses and loved ones are out there right now fighting for freedom. We ask that you give them a special blessing, and that you watch over them and keep them safe, Father. As we enter into this Easter season, I pray, Lord, that it would be a time of kindness and respect and love, Father. Father, we love you and praise you. We thank you for this wonderful place that we live. And we thank you most of all for your son Jesus. In his name we pray. Amen.
Say, Gerald. Praise God.
Praise God. To the United States of America, to the republic which sustains one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor to Texas. Justice, one state, under God, one indivisible.
I'm gonna read my usual here, in case everybody hadn't heard it before. The citizens who wish to address the council on any matter may sign up to do so, if you have done, so we still can. Do so prior to the meeting. Public comments will be received during this portion of the meeting. Please limit comments to three minutes. No discussion or decisive action will be taken by the city council on anything that starts on the agenda. Okay, we got people showed up here, okay. Larry, I guess you're number one.
Well, thank you. Instead of being number two or three, you're number one. Thank you.
We'll let you move down.
Talk about roads for a second. I know people have brought up roads, and I know we don't need to spend one, two, three million dollars on roads, because the original roads were not put in correctly anyway. I think what the concern is here the last two years is fix a few of the potholes. Lake Forest has so many potholes, and it's getting worse. You're losing the road. So, you know, asphalt is $24.97 for 50 pounds. 50 pounds would do the average two potholes. So for a thousand bucks, you can probably do all of Lake Forest. Just consider that, if you would. Just work on the potholes. The next question I have is, the city still subsidizing the sewer for the Cliff House
Do you know that, Dalton? I do not know that answer.
They're, I mean, the bond is paid for, I believe? I think it was the 2004 bond series?
It's still on there.
It's still on there? Okay.
How much longer is that?
Twenty, twenty-five?
Well, I mean, if you look at the financials, really, the sewer fund brings in about $35,000 of net revenue every year. So at some point, it's actually not, you know, at some point, it's actually bringing in money. So that is just something to consider, too, when you think about that, with the rates that we charge, the sewer cost.
Right, because everybody's got their water bills going up and that. It's like, you know, where the city subsidizes the Cliff House, but the city doesn't subsidize anybody else. So that's just, you know, concern that I have. And the last thing is, thank you for your financial report a couple of months ago. And it sounds like the city's in good shape. $3.3 million, if I remember right, your numbers approximately of funds that aren't designated. And, Mr. Mayor, you remember, a few years ago, we were gonna build a, yeah, we were gonna build a building over at Anse Park that was about 7,000 square feet. And EDC was 100% for it. The city was 100% for it. And we just didn't have the funds. So the funds that we had, we remodeled this building here. And then, to quote you, as soon as we have the money, we'll start on the other building. And with $3.3 million, that other building back then was estimated at about $300,000 for the total package. It was gonna be a three-year process, $90,000 some odd dollars every year. And at that time, we had verbal commitments of $50,000 to take in for the rental of that place. And I think that's still out there. I know it's still out there. So if you would consider bringing that up and getting it going, because you have all the information, they've done the research. I mean, we spent $40,000, EDC did, getting the research done. And we have all the drawings and everything from that. And I would like the city to consider getting that started, because it's for the community, the kids primarily. So we can do weddings, we can do receptions, we can do volleyball, basketball, you name it, in an enclosed building. And if there's a storm or anything, you have another building to go to. And plus, in another couple of years, this room's gonna be too small for this. So, you know, I would consider that. Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Mr. Snow? Formerly Ron?
Real quick, I'll just take a minute or two. First of all, it's good to see so many people here on weather like today, last year. On the 20th of last month, I'm the manager at the marina, we teamed up with All-Star Fishing. It's an area kayak bass fishing group. They created a project, All-Star, it's a cleanup group to maintain the area lakes. They wanted to spread their cleanup project to Lake Belton this year. The group installed two canisters at the marina and one right here at the bottom of the hill for hooks, fishing line, and, yeah, Clappas Park. They also collected over 15 large bags of trash around the shore. The group plans on returning two to three times a year. You can view the link to the video, which they took some awesome video of them picking up trash and from drone and stuff. So really, I pray that y'all go look at it. Anyway, and it's on YouTube at Project All-Star Morgan's Point Marina, and I'll get Jimbo to put that out for y'all. I didn't let anybody know, except really the mayor and Dalton going on, because I wasn't leaving nobody out. But they were bringing ROTC kids that are from Flugerville, and they were bringing those. And then it was on spring break, so they couldn't get a bus to get them here. So they didn't tell me how many were gonna come. Ended up, there was probably like 20, maybe 25. They brought their family and stuff. And all we had invested in it was, I invested Levi and a dumpster, and they brought all their trash bags. Domino's gave them pizza. So, and they, like I said, they had everything. And next time that when they come, I'm gonna have it more organized, and I'd appreciate if y'all would come, too. And maybe we could make some for the citizens to help, too. But it was really unreal. But I really wish y'all'd go look at that link to that, and I'll get Jimbo to put it out there. Yeah, thank y'all so much.
That's a great project.
Ronnie, that is a good job. Thank you for organizing that up.
It went from both my part all through here, just as far as they could go behind the condos, picking up, and then like one up and down. So, anyway, thank y'all so much.
That's fantastic.
Where's the road, Jeremy? There you are. Kinda hiding back there.
Well, it's a dangerous thing to give a pastor three minutes. We can really easy extend that out to 30, so. Everybody turn to Matthew chapter 27. I just want to invite y'all to our Easter services. Many of you know we have our sunrise service, and that is out here at Klypus Park, not Kleppis. I've been corrected a number of times, and it finally stuck. On the basketball court, it'll be at seven o'clock. Right now, the weather looks like it's gonna hold off and be good, so that's excellent. If that is way too early for you, that's all right. Come join us at 10:30 at Fellowship Baptist Church. But we'd love to see y'all at our Easter services, and we'll be praying for y'all.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Thanks, Jeremy.
Appreciate it. Ms. Phillips? Your turn.
Hi. I'm Anne Phelps, and I live over here at Marina, right by the tennis courts. I have two things that'll be real quick. But when y'all mentioned the condos sewer cost is compensated, is taken care of or something?
Subsidized.
Subsidized. What does that mean exactly? Because we're in those little cottages over here, and we pay a lot for the sewer. Are we subsidized? What is that about?
If you're tied in with it, also, I don't know if they want to answer that, but you're tied in with it just like my condos.
Okay.
The cost of it initially, if I pay, Mayor?
I don't remember. I can address some of it at the city manager update. I'll talk about it at the city manager update.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay, so just one thing that, you know, the previous mayor and the city manager and stuff, we've spoken to them before, you know, those of us that live on the green belt back here, you know, we've always had access to bring dirt or mulch in through the park to get to our houses in the back. And they've always been real good about that. But then when they remodeled the park and they put all the big blocks, we questioned, you know, now, you know, we don't have access anymore. And they said, it's no problem, you'll always have access, we just have to call City Hall, let them know when, and they'll come move a block. So we just want to make sure that's still the way it is, basically.
I'm not aware of it. I haven't not been approached on that. Have you, Dalton? Nobody's brought it to my attention, so I have no way of answering it until I find out.
Okay, yeah.
I mean, we'll look into it.
We can have somebody reach out to you.
Yeah, I would think we can find out, but nobody's ever answered it to me.
Yeah, it's been working well. We just wanted to make sure it was gonna continue that way. You know, and usually, they just come down and move a block. And if we're just gonna be a few hours, they'll come back and put it back. Sometimes they put it back the next day.
Okay.
So, okay. And then the second thing is, I mean, we really enjoy the park and the remodel, and everything is great. We love listening to the kids all day and everything. But we wondered if there could be a curfew, like nine o'clock or something? Because there's kids out here playing till one in the morning on the basketball court. You know, I'm sure they're teenagers or maybe young adults. But there's a lot of noise, 10, 11, 12, one o'clock in the morning. So I just didn't know if we would consider a curfew for the park.
Appreciate that very much.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Okay.
You know, I want to explain one thing. When there's public comments, the council by law is not allowed to get into discussion. We can give facts, but we can't start a discussion, because then it's illegal, because we're acting outside of the agenda. So it's always really hard for me just to keep my mouth shut. But I will say, I'm always here after the council meeting, so if there's any questions, I stay after the council meeting, and I can talk then.
Okay.
Okay. Next on the agenda is, we have a proclamation here. You know, we talked about our citizens being volunteers, and we do have a lot of them, and a lot of them are sitting in the audience tonight, I can see. But we also, we have some newcomers that have really helped us out. As everybody knows, we had a pretty severe fire here back on the 13th of the March, which we had three houses consumed by fire, and some fatality on that. But our firefighters and first responders, not only our guys, but from Salado, Temple, Troy, Moffett, fought that thing for three days off and on. We're there three days. And we had some citizens step up to the pump and came out and fed them. And I thought that was a pretty neat deal. And then, I mean, with no compensation wanted or whatever, not only took care of the firefighters and first responders, but also the citizens that were without electricity for a good while. And that company was Cajun Calderon, and I think Fred in Reagan. Is that right? Would y'all please step up to the podium here for me to see? Now, there's a lot of whereas here, okay? Okay, there's a lot of whereas here, okay? So bear with us on that right there. Whereas, okay. Red, the city of Morgan's Point Resort did experience a catastrophic fire event on Vista Drive on March the 13th of this year. Whereas, multiple fire, police, and medical agencies responded in support of the fire event. And whereas, the citizens of the surrounding area were subsequently without electricity for more than 24 hours. Whereas, first responders continued to maintain the scene for three consecutive and subsequent days. And whereas, Cajun Calderon did, in fact, on March 13th, volunteer time and effort, and with no request for financial support, did provide meals for the citizens affected by the fire, as well as their first responders. From therefore, I, Dennis Green, Mayor of the city of Morgan's Point Resort, on behalf of the city council and the citizens of our community, take great pride in establishing this official proclamation of appreciation to the Cajun Calderon. We thank you for your exceptional volunteerism in support of your neighbors and first responders following the Vista Fire Fires on March the 13th, 2022. Thank y'all very much. Appreciate it. Great support us, we need to support them.
That's right.
You know, any chance you get, and I understand, I did not get, if I'd known, I'd have stayed longer. But I didn't know that. So, but I thank y'all very much, and please send this right here, okay?
Thank you.
Because of the weather, right, because of the weather, we wouldn't have a short agenda tonight. So, first thing on the end, right here, I need a motion to consider the approval of the March eighth minutes, the regular session.
It's moved.
Any second?
A second.
Very second. Any discussion, any questions on the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion passed.
Okay, next one is, consider the ordinance 2022-03, the event center rental. We've had fees associated with the rental of this building for a while, but I don't think everything's been, it's been in writing as such. So Dalton, would you like to take it in?
Yeah, pretty simple. None of the fees have changed ultimately. It's the same thing that we've been doing for many years. We just needed to make it just official in the ordinances itself. One thing I wanted to kind of just discuss and open it up for discussion was the cancellation fees. We do have one, Kerry's been diving into us all at him, kind of spearhead the cancellation piece.
Just easy numbers. Obviously, I sign the AP checks every week, and it bothers me when I sign a check for $400 that someone rented it and then we return it. So really, it's kind of staff time and stuff like that. So in this fiscal year that we've been, we've already had five. Last year, we had 12. And the year before, prior to that, was 21. So again, it's nothing a huge amount, and not saying that you would want to charge them, you know, I think our policy now is within a week, you get, or no, within a month, you get, you know, full refund. I don't know if it would be something y'all would want to consider of just saying, if you cancel, you do not get a full, no matter when you cancel, that, you know, let's just say it's $10, $20, whatever, for staff time to process and then reprocess it. But I don't know. And my thing is that then there are opportunity costs lost, that if someone rents it and then they, you know, we don't do it, we have lost revenue for the city. So it was just something to consider, if y'all wanted to change the policy or not, to have just a minimum flat fee, you don't get a full 100% refund. So, that was it.
Any discussion on that?
I mean, I understand what Kerry's saying, and the problem is, if they cancel too late, there's somebody else that might have wanted it that now is not gonna receive it. So I totally understand that. I like the 14 days, though. That gives you two weeks, maybe to put it out there. A month may be too long. Sometimes it's not even a month when they rent it. So I like the 14 days, the way it reads, and to get a complete refund in 72 hours of the rental for 50%. But I noticed the pool talks about cancellation only 48 hours. So to me, the pool, too, needs to maybe fall under that 14 days.
Yeah, that's really why we kind of brought it up. Just not like whether we need to tweak at all.
Because...
But again, I still think, it might, being the money, I'd rather, I'd rather charge them something. You know, if you do it, you're not gonna get 100% back. But, I mean, that's just my suggestion. Keep it 10%, keep it $25, it doesn't matter. But really, by the time we, by the time it comes in and goes back out, it is, it's staff time that's invested in doing something that then brings no benefit at the end to the city.
Yeah, and the other side of it, too, you know, kind of, to put it into perspective, this is a highly sought location, you know, year-round. We budgeted just for this building, $20,000 for the year. We're already at, what, $16,000, give or take, plus or minus? So, I mean, you know, we're halfway, just over halfway through the fiscal year, and we're about, and we haven't even hit our busy season yet on rentals. And typically, you can't even find a day on Friday, Saturday, Sundays for the community center during the summer.
But that doesn't matter about busy season, right? Because you're ready to...
Okay, okay. So, I mean, it's pretty much year-round here in the community center. And then the pool, we haven't even added that one in yet.
But I'd like to see it consistent, the pool and the community center.
Absolutely, absolutely. So that's why we wanted, that's why we wanted to open it up for discussion on this, so...
Because it's the same thing. It's, you know, 72 hours or 48, I think it's 48 hours is what they say. You still, the city's already got to make plans for lifeguards according to how many people are there, and the city's gone, jumped through hoops, and then, you know, within two days, they can cancel it. So that makes it difficult. I think whatever we decide on the community center, 14 days or whatever, we need to do that with the pool also.
And so the other thing, you know...
Except for inclement weather. And we do need to make sure, because if it's a health and safety reason that we are closing the pool, to me, that's an act of God, they should get the full refund.
Yeah, and we can do those on case by case. And on, you know, on the 48 hours, I mean, it could even be something where, you know, you do 14 days out, you get a larger percentage. If you're, you know, within 72 hours out, you don't get as much, you know, to cover, you know, cover the loss, you know, for our lifeguards, you know, who are picking up extra hours and typically, because we, you know, our lifeguards have to stay under that 30-hour threshold, you know, per week. And so if they're picking up extra hours or picking up hours, it's not overtime or anything. This is, most of the time, it's part of their piece. So again, it doesn't happen very often, excuse me. We're just kind of planning for, you know, for the future. And so, community center was for this one, but if that's, if we want to make it consistent on both, then we can address both of those.
I think it'd be good. You still have staff time involved in both of it, so...
14, 72 hours.
What percentage would y'all want for 14 days?
It's like standard's like 25 bucks, right?
If you cancel within 14, if you cancel within 14 days or past 14 days? So like, if you cancel day 15, you know, before your event, how much would you get on your refund? 100% or...
That's how we've had it, 100%. And, you know, things come up, people get sick. I mean, we had crazy COVID stuff going on, so we don't want to be too punitive, but we also want to make sure that we can rent it to somebody else. So two weeks, does that, that may give enough time to do it. And then I think they had in there, what, 50% at 72 hours?
50%, yeah.
You know, and you may want to pull that back a little bit more.
Well, and that's why we want to bring it to council, ultimately, because it's fees and ordinances, it's really kind of, you know, on y'all. I mean, we're, we're...
Do we have a waiting list whenever people call in to reserve it?
Nope.
No, they don't track people that, that it was full, and then if they come back and cancel, even in that 14 days, my guess is, I'd be fairly safe to say that it's like 80 to 90% that you're only gonna have 10% of the time that that would actually get filled later on. So it is just completely lost revenue to the city if someone cancels.
So if someone calls in and cancels, then that space is just gone.
Correct. Yeah, if it's, if it's within 14 days, it's pretty much, I'm...
They're gonna make plans elsewhere.
Correct. So, I mean, you know, at 14 days, you don't have to, it doesn't necessarily have to be completely punitive. I mean, you know, we try to look at some industry standards just across the board from the enterprise. You know, we don't have to necessarily get it, you know, all, you know...
Is it normally about 30 days? I know like Airbnbs and things like that, it's around 30 days.
Yeah, it depends. You know, so, you know, a lot of these, you know, larger institutions, you can go out, you know, further, like hotels, you know, 24 hours, you can cancel for no fee, but they're eating that cost already. I mean, they're writing that stuff off. You know, for us, it's just a little bit different. Most venues, like I know when we reserve birthday party stuff, if you cancel within two weeks, you're pretty much not getting your full refund. It's usually 75 to 90% depending on what you're doing. And then as you get closer, you pretty much get nothing. You know, if you cancel 24 hours out, usually you're not getting any refund whatsoever.
Why don't y'all look at a few more venues and then maybe make a decision based on that? I'm just comfortable with keeping it consistent. So it's the same message for the pool, it is the event center, and we want to be reasonable with trying to rebook it again, but we don't want to be punitive. And if, and then Kerry, if you think we should take a fee, administrative fee, if they cancel, even if it was in that, I understand that, too, because there is...
Just don't make it too complicated.
Staff time, yeah.
No, and that's, and that's what we want to do.
Well, that's why keeping it consistent.
We want to keep it consistent and keep it simple.
Right, right.
Neil, on the ordinance for this one, can city council, with the fees, can they direct staff to do it, or direct city manager to make the fees reasonable and then notify, or do we have to come back with an ordinance on the fees next month?
What do y'all think? I think we can, we can handle it.
Yeah, I mean, if y'all are good with that, then we can, we can do, you know, if Neil's comfortable with it, then we can just do the ordinance, you know, to direct city manager to do it, and then if, and then I'll send it to everybody. We'll obviously post it, and then if we have issues, then we can...
Then we go and discuss it later.
Because then at that point, then at that point, then, you know, I could, I could, you know, adjust the fees and pivot accordingly.
Did we get to that time of year, too?
Because, I mean, yeah, we're not, it's not, you know, we're not adding, you know, the fee schedule stayed the same for the previous, and this was only the cancellation piece. So everything else on this list is as written. The cancellation piece, you know, we can say, hey, the city manager can make that decision. And y'all are good with that, then...
I'm needing a motion to accept that, please.
Quick motion, we accept?
Second.
Are we talking about the ordinance, adopting the ordinance? I'll second it.
And Donna, please. Anybody opposed? All in favor? All right, thank y'all. Okay, moving right along. Nathan, you have a report for us, please, sir?
Yes, sir. City council, mayor, city manager, citizens, the planning and zoning committee met on March 22nd. During that meeting, the following items were discussed and voted on for consideration to Morgan's Point Resort City Council. So as you know, we still have a vacancy open, so we interviewed Ms. Stryker. She's one of two possible applicants, and we'll make a recommendation for consideration to fill that vacancy this next meeting. Second item, P&amp;Z met to review issues regarding 18 danger field. Mr. Dickinson is here this evening. In the package, I know it's a real thick package, we broke it down to three issues. There's an accessory building, appears that all the issues have been resolved regarding permitting, and so no action was needed or taken by P&amp;Z. There's a drainage issues. P&amp;Z is not qualified nor has the resources to state if the drainage is or is not affected by proposed changes. So there's no action taken or consideration forward by P&amp;Z to city council. In regards to the pavers, we do have a motion to recommend moving toward city council for their consideration, a utility easement variance to allow stone pavers to be placed a utility easement variance to allow stone pavers to be placed three and a half feet from the resident property line, and the vote was unanimous in favor. Um, there was an additional item on the agenda, um, for Nine Compass, but they were out of state, so we're moving that to the next meeting. Okay, and then, uh, at the last city council meeting, there was a request from city council to discuss and review the definition of carport versus utility building. So the current ordinance states carport, or the court, current definition of a carport is defined as a detached structure that is open on all sides, designed to be used to shelter vehicles. So the motion, uh, to recommend moving to for, city, uh, forward to city council is that the above stated and current definition is clear and concise, so there's no changes needed. Uh, the vote was unanimous in favor. Uh, being there's no other, uh, business, uh, P and Z adjourned.
Appreciate it very much, thanks. Council, y'all have any questions to, uh, any zoning?
No, just, are we going to, uh, it talked about moving forward to council about the pavers, are we gonna address that at the next meeting?
Yeah, it'll be next meeting.
Okay.
Jimbo, I've got a report from, uh, the home room.
He stepped out for a minute, uh, he was working with some PIO stuff for the fire department. Um, just, he wanted me to give a quick update on it, so they're still, you know, actually, Lynn Mylum can do it, she's a member of the committee. No, uh, uh, rel- all right, all right, yeah. No, relatively simple, so the, the Home Rule Commission meeting is, is, you know, still meeting, um, twice a month, uh, with a town hall in there. The next town hall, I believe, is.
Twenty-eighth, April.
Twenty, twenty-eighth, twenty-eighth. Keep monitoring Facebook, keep monitoring the website, you know, we're putting information out. There has not been an updated draft of, of it yet. They focused on getting the survey and, and stuff done to complete the survey. There's also some items that are not on the survey just because it's a dated survey, uh, so the committee went over all of that. So more to follow, um, Chairman Jimbo. Meeting, and we're meeting Thursday, yes, see, there you go. No, meeting Thursday at two PM, um, you know, Jimbo, Chairman Jimbo wanted to at least also say too, we know that the two o'clock, you know, for citizens, it's not conducive for everybody. Um, it's made to be a public meeting, not a public hearing, so they want, they need to be able to take that two hours, you know, to, to conduct the business that they need. And he said he's gonna put out another update as well via letter, kind of at, at the status of it. Right now, a lot of what they're doing is just diving in, into the meat. Everything that's going on is gonna be readdressed, they're gonna go back, back over it again. What's in the draft format, it's not even a draft yet, it's a pre-draft. Um, there's, there's a lot of things that are still, that, that need to come to the table on it as well. So, uh, he will be putting out some more information on that.
I think what you just said is, people love that, uh, because as we're reading our materials provided by you and as we're learning more from the attorneys, and I think it's become where we question something that we might've said in the first part, and now we feel different. So we're going back through and we're revisiting, as you said, points. And I think, you know, if it takes time, it takes time. I mean, why should we not feel that if people change their minds and more information, you know, that's a good thing. Um, because they're asking questions and they're finding out the answers, and, you know, they want to do the best that we can for, uh, as it was approached to me at the beginning, the people that are residents here five to ten years from now. It's not us, I mean, it's the future, at the moment. And so, you know.
No, thank you, Lynn.
Appreciate that. Okay, moving along, uh, anybody, uh, Ron, anybody in departments have any questions or any statements to make? Uh, Matt, you, Jesse, Carrie, anybody? Uh, Dr. Offler, do you wanna give us an update?
Yeah, I'll, um, I got a lot of, a lot of notes, we'll, I'll try to make it quick. Um, so for those who don't know, Lieutenant Schutzy has been appointed the interim police chief for Morgan's Point Resort until further notice. Um, right now, we don't have any plans to go out for search, uh, we're gonna kind of do a ninety-day assessment. You know, we just want to make sure that the culture is, is set and, and they're kind of moving forward, we don't want to throw too much stuff at them at once. Um, so, uh, interim chief Schutzy is doing a great job, and, you know, we'll continue to let the residents know the next steps from there. Uh, Public Works has a new employee, Frank. Uh, he started two weeks ago. Last week, and he's our black cloud in the Public Works Department. Uh, they have been extremely busy, uh, in the Public Works Department between leaks and people running over meters and, um, mains and name it. They have been very busy, so if you see those guys around, uh, they, their crews have been working really hard. Y'all finally got out of there, what time last night?
Eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock, so they, they have been working around the clock. Uh, for those who, who, I think most everybody probably was impacted by it, um, we're looking at the water infrastructure to figure out some plans, you know, so we don't have to shut down the entire city be, you know, again, uh, when we had to shut, you know, do the, the massive oil water notice. That was an unexpected, unplanned leak, I, I wish we had a magic crystal ball. Um, unfortunately, I don't think there's enough tax money in the world that could get a magic crystal ball. But they're doing a great job, we are gonna continuously look at plans on how we can, you know, obviously prevent things like that from happening again, and, uh, making sure that we notify all our residents. So, great job, Jesse, thank y'all. Uh, and, and of course, the other side of it is, is, uh, maintenance BJ and his crews always help out and make sure that they have what they need. So really, the city as a whole has come together like they always do, like they always have, um, and work together to make sure that they accomplish everything that needs to be accomplished, um, especially when just bad things are thrown their way. Let's see, uh, since pretty much mid-March, uh, the city has been in some unprecedented times too. We've had, you know, the, the fire, um, you know, that took three homes, um, you know, add on a bunch of other public safety things from, you know, little high-speed chases and, you know, incidents kind of throughout, and then add, add the wildfires on top of that. Public safety has been extremely busy over the past month and a half, so we're trying to hopefully get them a little bit of a break. Um, you know, uh, Jimbo and, and the fire crews, they're kind of on standby now, we think Siletto might've gotten hit, and so we don't know the damage yet, so we just got wind of that. So hopefully we're through most of that. Um, if you haven't looked outside, you see kind of a little post out here, um, little two-foot cylindrical item in there. That's gonna be the future shade sale, it's gonna go over the kid pool, uh, so we can get some of our kids out of the sun during the summer. Uh, BJ and his crew are, are gonna start working on that a little bit more and kind of get it cleaned up. Uh, City Hall got a facelift, uh, for those who haven't been by City Hall, so we added a new ADA compliant, uh, handicap parking, so now we have two. Uh, that was a big ask, uh, for, from quite a few folks. Uh, got some new paints, a new touch-up and some landscaping. Community Center's out here, and then even though we are into spring, once they kind of get the community center ready for the season, uh, they are gonna be tackling roads. Uh, we put about fifty tons of asphalt down last year for various projects. Lake Forest is on our, on our list of things to do, we're looking at some new technologies to, one, try to help, um, not just hot mix and cold mix. We didn't do anything during the winter just because the hot mix, you can only do it in such small amounts, and, you know, the cost benefit is not there, it's better to buy it in bulk. Uh, so we are gonna be, uh, addressing roads, um, here, here soon, once we knock out the community center. Uh, you don't see them out here, but we also have some new, uh, lawn chairs for, or pool chairs. They're not out here yet, but that was a big ask, uh, from last year, was some of the old white ones that are there, were, those are being replaced completely. Uh, so we were able to get those. Um, Easter event is Saturday, so come out. Uh, sales tax, right now, we are currently about twelve thousand dollars calendar year-over-year increase from last year. Uh, so that's, you know, doing good, uh, everybody's seeing an increase in sales tax. Uh, we should get some more reports on that, but, you know, we're continuously monitoring that. Um, let's see. The, as far as the pavilion, we're gonna take a look at some of that, so we do have a parks plan for two thousand and sixteen, we've looked, you know, looked through that quite a bit. It is a plan that we are following, so any projects that we do look at, we do look at that plan and, and try to tie into it. If there is any updates, we can update them, you know, from a small amount. When it comes to kind of subsidized funds, you know, we, we could talk about this for hours, and we don't want to do that. So really, to keep it short and sweet, you know, every city has a general fund, and then we have enterprise funds. General fund is your, your city coffers, uh, usually funded by property taxes, uh, in very layman's terms. And then enterprise funds are revenue drawing, so, i.e. Public Works, we buy water, we sell water, and it offsets it. So even if our expenses go up in water purchase, we offset that in that. So sewer is one of those enterprise funds, along with the wa- um, along with water and along with the marina. Every city typically has something that's subsidized or something, whether you do a road, whether you do sewer, um, that's, you know, revenue drawing. We are assessing all of that, you know, constantly, Public Works same way. Um, and then a marina, of course, you know, we, is our unique one, other cities have airports that are subsidized in some form or fashion. So all of those get factored into how we look at bonds, how we look at funding streams or revenue streams, um, or, you know, if bonds do need to take, you know, be taken out. So as we start forecasting and planning for the future, we're able to address all of these. Because again, there are some city services that not every city, you know, every resident is gonna get, um, we just have to adjust and balance, you know, balance that into our planning. But, let's see. I think that is all I have on that one. Any questions?
Thank you, Dalton, that's moving on pretty good, you're, you've got a lot of stuff on your plate, and, uh, you've got a lot planned to keep you busy. And with the, with the grass fires, everything else, everybody's been busy around here lately. Well, uh, you wanna move right along with your council, uh, let's go to y'all, we'll start with, uh.
I have the auxiliary.
Oh, no, that's right, I got one more.
This is the auxiliary report that Karen Steigner gets together, uh, every month for us. They met on March the tenth, and, uh, Sean, you were there, they were happy that you were there, and Dalton, uh, they swore in their offices. And they're working right now on doing welcome bags for new residents, which I think is wonderful, we used to have this years ago, it's, it's, it's a great, it's a great thing to do. So, um, they, also the EDC's joining them, the Business Network, um, our cops are probably helping them out with it too. They've got a list of groups that are helping them with it, and, uh, so they're gonna try to get that started. You know, they were ready to go, and then COVID hit, so I don't think people want them coming door-to-door. So, uh, they talked about, uh, you know, they had their chili cook-off, oh, that was so much fun. Those of you that didn't come out, you really missed a treat, we had such a good time, it was a beautiful, sunshiny day, and people were trotting down on Great West Loop on the five K, the chili, everybody's chili was delicious, and our former mayor and his grandkids won first place, so, uh, it was a great day for everybody. Uh, and they've got this on their website too, if you want to check out any further details. Um, the auxiliary, of course, always supports the Easter egg hunt, which Dalton mentioned, is this Saturday at ten o'clock over at Anne Safe Field. And the cops program, where Lynn heads up, they're gonna be joining, they got together and they made thirty-plus baskets for the kiddos, and, and they have all kinds of prizes. So they've just, you know, both those groups, and the city gets involved a hundred percent doing it, so it's a wonderful day. Uh, so be out there this Saturday, and if you don't have a kiddo, just come out and watch it, it's fun. And, uh, their water aerobics are gonna start right after Memorial Day, uh, Barbara Lyman is the team leader, and we're hoping to get some evening sessions and some daytime sessions. And, uh, ladies, we have a great time, I don't know how much exercise that we actually do, but we had such a good time. So, you know, come out for that, and it's, it's a fundraiser also for, you know, for the fire department. Uh, they're gonna plan a garage sale that's coming up, and they're gonna give you more on that. Their Alaskan cruise is still scheduled for the eighth through the sixteenth. Facebook, you can get on Facebook and look at the details, or call your travel agent, and they have the details of it. Uh, the fire department needed a washer and dryer, and you can imagine, you think about the fire, that, that's one thing, I actually sent a text, and I said, do they need help washing and drying towels, because they use those cold towels to put on the, that's the first thing I could think of that they needed. Well, evidently their washer and dryer was on the blink, and so, um, Jeanette Grabman had contacts over at Lowe's, and Lowe's gave us a wonderfully discounted price, uh, to get a new washer and dryer for the fire department. And the auxiliary did say they have noticed that the ice machine has hit its last ice cube, no more ice cubes, so that's something they're gonna work on the horizon. And, uh, once again, this is, we love our fire department, we love what we do, we couldn't do it without your support, and they wanted us to wish everybody a very blessed Easter, which I do also. And I want to reiterate what Dalton said, wow, what a staff, what a staff we've had this month, it has just been crazy. And our fire department working around the clock to keep us protected and, and further loss of property, our police are always out there assisting with all of that, and their jobs have increased, looking at their stats over the last month. You know, water department, our dream team water department, out there around the clock, we don't even think about this. Everybody says, when's the leak, where's the leak, when are we getting our water back? And these guys are, I saw a picture, Jesse, it looked like you were in the river. In the water, in his jeans, here's a supervisor, he is out there right in that, right in the mix of it, trying to fix our water force and repair our water force. So, and thank you to, you know, Dorothy and Jim Ann, and everybody that kept us in touch with what was going on, and the water boils, and our, you know, websites and everything. And, uh, also, I mean, our whole crew, and of course, everything has to be supported by administrative staff, so we know that there was a burden on them too. So we thank all the departments in the city, y'all have done a fabulous job for us. Alrighty, let's see, was there anything else? I just wanted to thank everybody for coming out tonight, my gosh, I almost didn't come out tonight.
Thank you for bringing the rain.
You know, Jeremy has a way of bringing rain to our city, sunshine and rain, that's your job. But that's all I have, Dennis.
Okay, do you have any personal comments, Donna, I know that was the auxiliary report, do you have anything?
Well, I threw in my personal comments, thanking all of our staff. Love this staff, we just have no idea what goes on behind the scenes here to keep us all safe, protected, and healthy.
Yeah, just, uh, to reiterate, well, uh, thanks for everybody coming out tonight and the weather, um, and, uh, we, we are very happy to get the rain, we so desperately needed it. And yeah, just to, uh, ditto that, uh, all the, uh, you know, city staff and everything, we appreciate everything that, that they do for us.
Robbie?
Well, thank you again for coming out tonight, it's always good to see a, a crowd, especially on a night like tonight. And thanks to everyone that's been helping these last few weeks, I've, you know, what Donna said, it's just amazing. Uh, I was out of town a couple of weeks ago, and the fires were going on, and my phone's blowing up, I'm just like, oh my gosh. But thank y'all for, for putting your time in. Thank you.
First thing I want to do, I want to commend Jesse and his crew on that water leak out there, I was out there watching them. There was no wasted motion and no wasted time. Everybody knew what exactly what to do and what they were doing. Done an outstanding job, Jesse, thank you, and I'd like to thank everybody for coming out in the rain.
Lynn, is there anything going on with the cops? What's going on?
Um, besides the Easter egg this, um, this, um, Saturday, we are selling, uh, a, wrap tickets for a custom quilt, and it's one ticket for ten dollars, three tickets for twenty, and, uh, it was donated to us by a member of fellowship at the church, and so we are, uh, we're gonna draw and make the third person for that. And I wanted to also add that the church is also involved with the, uh, Easter egg hunt, because we have, they always supply us with eggs, and then they, I always set them up a, a table, and the ladies spread the gospel, and spread eggs, and, you know, and all that, and so, fellowship's a big part of it as well. And, uh, this is our big moneymaker right now, so, or, trying to raise my group, so, if, if y'all, we have tickets, I have tickets, uh, if anybody wants them for the March, maybe thirty-first. Oh, also, oh, go ahead, you finished the, uh, well, okay, because of the fire thing, this has nothing to do with cops though, this is me on my own thing. Because of the fire, and then the wildfires, and all this kind of stuff. Um, I know, I think some people have done too many things, but, uh, I come up with another, so I've started a thing called the Morgan's Point Resort Emergency Relief Team. So, um, because I was reading so many things from the people of, uh, neighbors, neighborhood, uh, you know, neighbors in Morgan's Point and that kind of thing, and when the fires happened and whatnot, um, so I thought it would be very important for people to have clothes or to have, uh, food or have whatever when it hap- when it, when something like that happens. And you don't know what's gonna happen, it's like you said, you don't plan for those things. And, uh, and so I took it upon myself, I started collecting foods already of non-vegetables, I've got ten cases in my, uh, garage right now, and it's nothing that will, they will not go bad, nothing like that. So I have ten cases I've collected so far, and I'm doing clothes, and I've got food, and then, uh, there will be adding people to the team, it's not just a team of one, but, uh, uh, so that also we would set up a table or something out there, and we would be providing water and whatnot for the guys, when, the guys and gals, when they're fighting fires and whatnot, and meals and whatnot, so that's gonna be the purpose of this one. So, that's all I have.
That's a wonderful idea, do we have any space, like, at the maintenance building or anything?
Um, we're, we're looking, so, I mean, we do have space, kind of, we just gotta, we just want to make sure that it's protected, so that's kind of the biggest thing, so.
Right.
Um, kind of in line with that, you know, there, we're kind of looking at, you know, I guess the name of it is the Disaster Pantry. So we're kind of keeping, like, additional funds, you know, on staff or on hand, you know, through donations, through other, other things in concert with this. Uh, i- if something does happen, then we have some resources for them. You know, not working against, like, you know, the Belt and Core, anybody like that, but just making sure that if for some reason they're not available, we have assets.
That's great, that's a really good idea.
Folks, thank y'all for coming out, I'm gonna, I was gonna make a little comment, uh, the Easter egg hunt is a phenomenal deal, if you've never been, and I bet we can make the exception, if you really wanted to hunt Easter eggs and for a small donation, you brought a basket and you wore rabbit ears, we would let you hunt.
There you go.
Let's hunt it as a kid, so, uh, don't, don't give up on us, but it's, it's a neat deal, if you, and I'll tell you what, it, it doesn't last for two minutes, it may be, because I mean, when they go through, it, it's like a vacuum cleaner, it, it's gone, but it's, it's worth it. And, uh, so anyway, and we're gonna have, uh, next, or the next item, we have an executive session tonight, discuss some personnel, uh, policies and things, so consequently, we're gonna have to clear the, uh, auto. So consequently, we're going to have to clear the audience and I know you don't want to stand outside in this rain.
Read them.
Yeah, I am too.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm going to read it here. So I'm gonna, I just want to let you know that we will come back in after the executive session and re-adjourn, re-adjourn this right here. So if you don't want to stay, I understand that. So anyway, according to pursuant to section 551-071A, consultation with city attorney pending or contemplated litigation at a given, at, at our, what time is it? 6:49. So like I said, we will, clearly the building, we'll have this and then we will reassess when we get to the end of it. If you, if you're welcome to stay if you want to and come back in, but there's probably not going to be much after that.
And there's never any action taken, voting in a executive session. So we come back, open it back up, and if there's any action to take, we take it in an open meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thank y'all for coming out. Stay safe. Hey, Larry, Larry?